Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notice were given to the media on July 23rd and July 30th. And for the record, today is Friday, August 2nd. And the time now is 2:01. The committee will hear and accept testimonies for Bill 181-35COR, introduced by Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Amanda Shelton, and Senator William Castro. An act to add a new Article 13 to Chapter 1, Division 1 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to compensating adjudicated claims of the greatest generation of Guam for the atrocities suffered during the World War II occupation of Guam. And Bill 5-35LS, introduced by Senator Ted O'Toole. An act to add a new Article 9 to Chapter 77 of Division 2 Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to developing a new public hospital facility through the establishment of the Espe Dita Ninalata Hospital or Life Planning Commission. I'd like to acknowledge the president of my colleagues, starting with my immediate left, Speaker Tina Munia Barnes. Ma'am. And to her left is the minority leader, Senator William Castro. To my right, the beautiful ladies on the right would be Senator Theresa Lai and Senator Kelly Mars. General rules for public hearing. Conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of sign up on the sign in sheet. Written testimonies may be read lengthy. Written testimonies should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies shall be confined to the substance. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for these proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony or may be asked to leave or be escorted, removed from the room. And I believe our audience today are honorable, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't believe we'll be out of order. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name for the record. I'd ask the following individuals that have signed in to give oral testimony. Jose Garrido, she not Joe? And Ben Vicente Garrido? And Tristan Kantoniza? If you can please come forward to the podium. You wanted to give oral testimony. And before we begin, I'd ask Speaker Tina Munia Barnes to please give her opening statement. Ma'am.
Sisus Masih, Mr. Chair. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this afternoon and share my opening remarks in support of Bill 181-35COR. And before I do that, I'd also want to recognize some of our signees who's here in support of the bill. They have not checked to provide oral testimony, but they're here for major support and one of the biggest advocates for trying to see this war reparations be given to our signees. To Mr. and Mrs. Ben and Susie Arceo, undankuluna sisus masih for being here this afternoon and being a part of this public hearing process and showing your support for this bill. I wanted to acknowledge that because they're also in the sign up sheet as far as supporting. Mr. Chair, as you know, I want to say around 20,000 people on Guam back in the 1940s suffered through the most painful time of our island's history. Some of them are right here and now, as I noted to you earlier, and many of their names are recognized on the Hall of Strength just outside this public hearing room. You know, as young children, our manomko had to bear witness to beheadings and torture. Some had to endure forced labor, rape, and even starvation. And after 75 years, the members of our greatest generation are burdened with silently shouldering the memories of war. We are unfortunate to never know their struggles as war survivors. The least we can do is award them with compensation for the loss of many freedoms during this time. Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, I want to share with you that we lose a survivor each and every day and many leave us without that bit of closure. I want to say that in working with the Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton, and of course Senator Will Castro, the minority leader and the administration, and of course, a lot of our colleagues in this body, I want to say that we offer this Bill 181-35COR. And I want to share with you that I hope we will expeditiously give them that closure. And I would be remiss, Mr. Chair, if I didn't commend all those who came before me and the hard work that they've done to try and find a solution from all our congressional delegates to the previous administration, but more importantly, for the administration today and working with each and every colleague in this august body. I want to say that we definitely would not be here today in this august body had not been for what they have been through and the freedoms that we live today. I remember one of our signees at the Hsu Mengilau Memorial, she said that you are here today because I lived through World War II and I lived through World War II because the United States came to save us, came back to save us. And it was also noted to be by my mom, who shared with me and my siblings that she prays each and every day that she lives, that her children and her grandchildren would never, never have to endure the atrocities that they had to go through. And though it was really hard, she has put some closure to some part of what has happened by sharing a couple of interviews that she's done in the past. But she just wants us to know that as we are free today to make choices and to do things, we should be grateful and respectful for what has been provided for us. And I see, as I see several of the manomkos out here this afternoon, I want to say sisus masih for being here, sisus masih for never giving up the fight for all the other survivors, but more importantly, undankuluna sisus masih for making sure that you make sure that this story is alive and to the awards are given to our signees that truly deserve it. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I hope that my colleagues would look at this effort. I want to share that we also worked with the folks in DC when we introduced this bill. A draft copy of this bill was sent to some folks in DC. There were some amendments that were made before we had introduced the bill, and it is in form today. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will give me the opportunity to support this effort so we can truly realize this measure. It does talk about the articles on how the, I mean, the sections talk about how the funds will be used specifically to pay claims of compensable Guam victims. It will note that the governor can transfer sums not to exceed 7.5 million and that the funds shall be used to award compensable Guam victims with the certified claims, those who have the certified claims. So that's the gist of the bill. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill that has been authored by our colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We will begin with Tristan. You'd be first and then proceed to Mr. Garrido and then the younger Mr. Garrido after that. Thank you.
Hafadeh, my name is Tristan Kantoniza. Buenas and hafadeh to all members of the 35th Guam Legislature present here today. As a descendant of families that survived the Second World War and as a member of the Chamoros community, I would like to state my satisfaction for the intent of this bill. It would mean the world to me to witness living survivors and their families receive the reparations that they are entitled to, given the decades of waiting that they have endured. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Garrido, sir?
Hafadeh, my name is Vicente Garrido. I support this bill 100%. Estina bill, esti zotan war repressio rey? Matu ge donkulu na iso, zan fina gaga, esti? Na war repressio? Matu ge donkulu na iso, zan fina gaga? Other, hafadeh, si zestan, mi geman mautain na war survivors? Namasta p'ogu man a alita, gi ni pol esti war repressio? Zan gi nmalago na ifidi ro, nap'op'op'osit, hagasa op'osit? Agin malago? Man malebretin? Na nota komprendi? Edi gi finu i kuentus na, naman malebretin? Lo gi na tanu ti man marikuniset, kon man tau to wey na, ni man malebretin? Edunna ta gi gi ni pa'ogu ste, sia, na finatinas? Duru, man kentus po di storian i gera? Kadha sokan, ta songan, po di babarias, zan ipinatinas? Todu na hafan man ma su sedi? Di duranti, zan is dispe si gera? Per gi ngona matu ste, man kentus et po war repressio? Si gya man mautain tau to? Ta gi gi ni asta p'ogu? Ko di dekwa, ko tu onso, di dekku kentus po di ri zota? Estap'ogu sta, onku o gatsu, kom ekintu sa u, po di ri zoku? Esti di ri zota ni man chamuru na, ti man marispeten? Zan no unga, asotbahe, zan du su ni du, zan i gera? Lo ko asotbahe, ni zotan war repressio? Ah, hi te asotbahe? Yeah, the federal government military saved us from the Japanese. But to this day, what did he do? Anything about war repression? We're still fighting for it. Matu china di donkulu na iso, zan fina gaga, estina kasi? I pe ste war repressio gi ni? Zan no go supetis, tina bill? Zabai faishin anzo, ko zan gi, p'ogu, gaigis US Senate, e bill, delegation i klas? Zan gi, i Republican, refused to accept that. Who you still on this bill pay war repressio to the war survivors? You still, right? Okay. And there will be no, nothing to, I owe you, listen that? Okay, ma li gi no, zo fakpo, o listigatso na klasis ya? Zan laha na, man man ma bi dotata sta? I po offa, ipa besangan, sina ti konektin na, ti tsu menglung? Zan i war repressio? Lo anyo tataytae di, i dote stau politikat? Edunna interlupu as racist, as Dave Davis na? Astopmo? Sa gosanuk, gosanuk na? I man di tau to mos, man ma fatu magi Guam na? Mos, man gaig di ri zu, gi ni hitan, man gaig gi ni, man tau to tau nu gi ni? Ti man marispeten na? Edunna ta gi gi ni ste, todoo? Debi di ta fan marispetak gi ni? Ta nota stigatso? Debi di tauza, otu tau to? Gi ni hitan, po fatu magi Guam, da po songan it? Hafan man agota? Esti sia, i man ma su sedi gi ni, ni po di ste war repressio? Di ri zotas ste? Di giratas ste? Ma, hitaha, man todoo, man gaiget, gi entalu, da si gya man? Man ma desit, po di ste na kasi, finatinas todoo? Da likta, estagatso? Laana? Zan gi ngua ha salapi, zan tu duz ya, po duz ya? Otu talu besangan, u hungu na, lena du lago na? I po di ngagago, ko sina ina i, naani tau to sia? Ni edi man ma prebasta, nip'op'op' man na posit, lena munga sa no, no confidential? Lo wa na control number? Ba control number, gi gi war claims commission? Sina faishin, ni control number? Ni edi maski 700, man ma preba? Pe, pa blisa, ni control number na? U du gi pa pit gaseta? Pe, edu, i tau to ni mori si, bi du na control number? Atu magi, hauzi? Na estama preba, da gi zo reportigatso, gi ke bednu, pa moanu na? Do tu ngu na, estagi ma preba gi, da go, do ri si, bi ste na kata? La pa be man la i, DS meet? Ta gi ni sia, tauza gi confidential? Hafagi, haf, aldi po tu ngu, aldi non mu? Zan gi control number? Bu, bu na na, mos pa besangan na? Lo edu, la matu po di ste war repressio? Do go supetis, ti war repressio gi ni? Hagas estas tilai, debi di fakpo na? Debi di fakpo? Samon me gayta, go 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 na? And then DS meet, Kinsey meet, zan todoo sia? Monica? Lo para Guam estano? Para fa na atau ta, no estan? Uh, uh, that's the price for the coffin, for the war survivor to die. We should get more than that, na? With all these years that this war repressio that we haven't get paid, they should pay every war's very, very interest from the date that the war claim is approved to now. And we'll see. So that's all I have today. I support it and thank you for accepting my testimony.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Joe Garrido, sir?
Sisus Masih, Mr. Chairman. Para pau guna hiningo. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and all the rest of you up there, and Speaker Munia Barnes, Will Castro, Theresa Lai, and Kelly Mars. This is a dead horse that we've been riding on for 75 years. And every time the horse begin to breathe his last breath, we sort of like, we got a reprieve that war repressio is coming, so. By the way, it looks like we got control of the Guam Legislature today because there are not too many people that are testifying. So if you could give us at least four hours to explain our side of this history? I'm just kidding, you guys. Anyway, let's, like my good primo, cut to the chase. My good primo Ben, late Ben Tangilin would say, you know, let's get to the point. Anyway, I appreciate the bill and I want to thank you, Speaker Munia Barnes and Amanda Shelton, who is not here, and Senator William Castro. I would assume that the rest of you would be riding on this bill as well. I want to go down to the number of Chamoros that was approximated here, given the number of 20,000. I know I'm an historian of kind, of some kind, and I've read this history back and front and front and back. But this is the first time that I've come over a figure like this, that there were at least approximately 20,000 Chamoros. When you hear the documentation of the war repressio and other history and other stories that are being told, they always draw the figures of between 14,000 and 16,000 people who are here before the war. It is not surprising that 20,000 is here because there's another problem figure that was being thrown around as well as to how many Chamoros actually died. Because I hear 700, I hear 900, 1,000. But in my own research, I can draw a figure that there were at least 1,200 to 1,300 Chamoros that died as a result of the war. And both were victim both from the Japanese and from the Americanos. So 20,000, that's my, I guess what I'm leading to is that maybe there's a chance to actually verify this, whether this is exactly the count that you have up there in the wall. The other one I'm going to bring up is on page 3, fund structure and administration. And I'm not too sure by reading this, but this bill is going to establish a fund, right? A fund called the 75th Guam Liberation War Claims Fund. And in my testimony several months ago when Senator Shelton introduced a resolution, I recommended that the war repressio fund should never be used for any administrative cause at all. That the fund for the war claims itself should be specifically for the claim itself and that it should also not be subject to tax. Because war claims payment are similar to combat pay. You are in a war zone, you get your pay, it's non-taxable. I believe, I hope that the government of Guam do not have any interesting idea that in order to come up with a little bit more of a revenue that they'll tax the war claims of those World War II survivors. That was part of my testimony during Senator Shelton's resolution. I've been carrying this copy of Chapter 22, Guam War Reparation Commission, One Guam Code Annotated General Provision. This is a chapter that was created by a passage of a public law. And I'm going to bring this briefly up because I don't think the war repressio question is over. And this bill that was passed to create the commission dies when all of the war repressio issues are resolved. And I will read this, but let me, if I may please, you can tell me to stop, but I really want to say this. This is my, part of my testimony is that, you know that I'm very sad, very disappointed regarding the lack of concern and sense of anger that our own people should feel about, our own people should feel about the manner in which Chamoros war repressio had been structured in a compromise agreement that would disqualify most of those people out there in the wall. An overwhelming majority would be disqualified just because of the date that they died. What is more shameful was especially the lack of any sense of outrage among our people, our leaders included, regarding the lack of dignity and respect that the United States have treated our Chamoros World War II survivors. Our own people and leaders felt more concerned and worried that the funding for the war repressio would be coming from Section 30. And not about the thousands of Chamoros who are going to be denied their human right of war repressio just because having survived the war, they died before December 2016. This is an atrocity against our people who are victims of war crimes from both Japan and the US. These war reparations are for World War II, the war reparations that we're talking about now are for World War II Japanese war crimes. I don't believe they'd ever mention the inclusion of friendly fire, destruction of our ranch and houses by the US invasion caused by the invasion. For World War II Japanese war crimes committed against our people. The Chamoros people, but the US forgave Japan from compensating our people for those war crimes. Now it seems that the manner in which the war repressio claims application are being conducted, the US appears to be protecting the interests of Japan by imposing ridiculous questions as if the Chamoros are being questioned in a court litigation. The US itself destroyed a lot of properties and killed many Chamoros during their indiscriminate bombardment of Guam. Judging from the attitude and the manner in which war repressio claims application questions are being framed and conducted, they are questioning whether we are even here during the war. I have mentioned this before and have asked some elected leaders to have a public hearing, and I'm so glad that you're having this one right now. A round table discussion even, so that our people can discuss those issues. I, you don't know how much I appreciate this, this public hearing. This is a Chamoru human right issue, and our people need to completely understand and have a say regarding war reparation. Make amendments and agree with a final war reparation that will bring respect, dignity, recognition for our people. After all, more than 75 years of waiting, is this too much to ask? I can, I have tons of historical documentation that I can bring about this war reparation. And in, in your bill, you mentioned something that it was briefly, actually briefly acted upon right after the war. But even at that, the way it was framed, it was so disgusting and so unjust that about the only people that got war reparation is the church and some few people here. And it's very disgusting that in the records, anybody can go and research it, that the war reparation of a person of non-Chamoru is worth more than a Chamoru. If you care to read the report, you would find that out, that a Chamoru is worth around $3,000 less than, than a white man who died here during the war. It's, it's just crazy the way they figured it out. Now, pardon me, but I'm going to bring this up. This is a 1997, '24 Guam Legislature bill that was passed and it became Public Law 23-13, which, which because of another chapter, 21, already existed in Title I Guam Code Annotated, created by Public Law 23-147. The compiler has reassigned this new chapter as Chapter 22 instead. This chapter replaces former Chapter 15 of this title and this chapter having a more permanent purpose. Why I bring this up is that it actually create, it involves the creation and membership of the Guam War Reparation Commission. And I highlighted some because if I, I don't want to read this, you know, it could take more than, than the chairman would like me to, you know. But like all other bills, when you establish commission, you know, you, the governor's going to appoint two and the speaker's going to appoint this and anyway. But what gets me here is the last sentence of this paragraph, paragraph, section 2201. The last sentence, "Once appointed, the term of office of all members of the commission shall continue without any interruption until all matters of reparation are resolved. And members shall serve without compensation." I am going to interpret that with being ignorant that there might be other bills later that deleted this or what, I don't know about that. But I'm reading this and if this is still in the books, something's going, something's wrong. The section 2202 function, "The commission shall be responsible for pursuing every possible avenue to achieve full and just reparation for the evils of war and the injustices of its aftermath for the people of Guam who were directly affected and their survivors. This shall include, among other things, monetary compensation for individuals who suffered mental anguish, physical abuse, injury, and death. Land returned for those people whose lands were unjustly taken with little or no compensation." Whoever engineered this bill was really in the right direction. It was going to bring justice for all the Chamoros here. And, and what I'm saying is that I've, I don't believe that I have ever come across any information that land was returned as a result of this war reparation commission. And I, "To continue and compensation for all who suffered deprivation of shelter, food, medical attention, or who endured forced labor and forced marches during and immediately after the Japanese occupation. The commission is authorized to seek in addition to, but not in substitution of, the foregoing generalized compensation for the people and the island." Are we substituting something in this war reparation that we are now encountering and talking about? Is there something that was done that is against this law? Where you are requiring that people who died before 2016, December, shall not be compensated? Is that against this law? The reason I'm bringing this up, my, my good senators, Mr. Speaker and all that, is I believe that I support the bill. Let's move on. I don't really care what's coming from Washington DC. Hold back because it might screw up a war reparation plan that the federal government have been planning for 75 years. No, push it. Do it. Because the next public hearing, there will be only three here, people who can actually speak because all the rest have passed away. I'm bringing this law up. I am not pointing figures. I just want some Attorney General to come up and read this and say, you know that compromise that exclude people that died before December 26 is really wrong. And it's against this bill, but it's also against their human rights. How can we? I, I think it's the situation we're in above that we're really pushed on the corner until we agree with anything they throw at us. Oh yeah, that's right. No problem. Let's do it. I can't, I can't, I can't figure that out. I think we should all be united and, and march on in the future to find a way whether you could do it with local funds. But you need to compensate those people that died on the wall or their descendants, their heirs. Because lacking, being an attorney or expert on international law, it's just when I feel that that's really wrong, it is wrong. And I think we all are our grandparents, our mothers, our siblings. We all then, this final act, man. Let's get amendments or whatever that we can finally put some dignity in the way we think about war reparation. And that's all I got to say. I don't want to cry. I just want to be angry. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Grido. I know, Mr. Grido, you wanted, Ben?
Yeah, this is my closing comments and this is a suggestion. You don't have to agree. Okay. If or should the resolution that was introduced by Congressman Michael No, Sir Nicholas, the Senate, should that die or fail to pass? I am suggesting that starting next year and the year thereafter, to cancel the liberation activities. Cancel it. There's no reason to continue celebrating this kind of thing with all these things how we are being treated for 75 years. It's a joke. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grido. Madam Speaker, you have, I guess, a testimony?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know that Mr. Veno is in the audience and he had a written testimony cumulago. Taita estina documenta, put for bot consigue.
Mr. Veno, sir.
......... I don't deserve to be paid any dollar sign, pero accept it. Say my cono. Dinanti si Ben hafa gaga. Is Chamoru. Haasii. Ni bidan niya. Saane ma bomba ni atomic. Haasii. Adzimu mirexi malagohu. Sinanau antatau ni manma po den todudu. Hafana ina para imismo isalapeta ni manmanait ma gi ni manarset bi tanu todu. Adzua papasta? Edgi na malagohu na in attitu di fahina faisaun. Den hatso. Kausinya an munha den esti. So support esti na bio. An munha den esti. Kausinya in hat sahulu. Ja adji magohit. Na manayinata. Ufan mahasu. Jo fan manai ni inau. Na meritu. Na meritu. Ja hungan mana iwi la mangai famaguun. Mangaiya ifa magunia. Bulakushonu parabaisangan. Hafana adzu laguna madisi di. Utunguanain ha kontrasi. Hadiaduna sinidot. Simaken? Ekwa kau dinanci ulau. Ha kontrasti na ina papan mapausia di manayinata ni estaman matay. Japarajem man lalala hungan wa gradesi lalala du pagu. Ja utungu ginini korason midu na magohit. Na hungan. Ja huhu na balii. Na in alulau di put pa bot. Sa tiutungu kau agupa bat inagupan ya baipata gi bat di. Utungu na sempigwa gi zamdu maktu de lenya ay si Ben. Sa gaigi gi kahun. La tiluanzo nenau. Angingai gi zo gi kahun seta zo pipaau. Estai datto. Taadzaun ananga pagu na ora. Na isainata. Taadza malagohu. Tiuni sisi takahit bat mansana. Bat bunitun sina bunitun. Estatadza malagohi linalawa ba yalu ba piska. Ba yahu. Ja ba chogui idinanti na chozo kadadia ba atani galau ba atani paluma. Za baycho gui idinanci na cho zu kadadia bayatan igalo, bayatan ipaluma, bayatan ifa magunu, ifa magun, ifa magunu. Da bulakizamdu ti humangi 51. Na nietu dan bis nietu, siati na nieta dan tetari nieta. Da mangaga ya es tapagu. Za sinidot dan sinidora samdu. Senor San Agustin. Senora. De lahi. Senora. Ta itanu. Senora. Tinya mundubon, an senior Castro. Dunkulu diu gradesi atensyon. I atensyon dan ina na si niya midzu. Kausinya putpabot munga mananga. Na paraguahu mano parefiniruhom. Da paualuk. Kausinya du mamahan ataut. Tau anu si duus, manana si duus, pengi si duus. Si duus maasi dunkulu diu gradesi.
Thank you, Mr. Veno. I will begin with Senator Kelly. Do you have anything, any questions you want to ask the panel that has spoken earlier?
Not any questions per se, but just to make a couple of comments. So, sign them as see, of course, for everybody who came out here. And I believe it was Tun Garido that was making a comment about how few were able to show up today. And that really speaks to the 75 years that it's taken to try to get towards something close to reasonable or appropriate as consideration and recognition for all that Tamaros and the locals who were here were forced to basically undergo. Those 75 years, it is too long and it has taken a toll. And it leaves so few to even be able to testify. So for those that did come out, it's incredibly important that you did. It's incredibly important that you have shared what you have. And incredibly important for people to really listen and to learn. I don't have any questions, but I certainly have always fully supported some proper recognition. I think it's unfortunate, certainly the length of time that it's taken, but even the route that it's taken. And I think Tun Garido was mentioning that as well. It hasn't been direct. In my eyes, it's not from the appropriate source. We're essentially paying ourselves. But, you know, I support having an opportunity to try to provide some sort of recognition. So just masi.
Thank you, Senator Kelly. Senator Turley, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dunkulu na si duus masi para todos para benatamidu dan para para testimonio. I agree with you, Joe, Mr. Garido, that it, we should do this, we should pay it as soon as possible. It should be paid as soon as possible. I'm very hopeful that Congress will pass it because I think that is the, it actually will end up quicker if they can get that through the Senate shortly. But, but I agree with all of you that the people who need to see this, need to see it as soon as possible. But I also agree with your sentiments, several of you, that despite all our efforts to this point, it still does not feel like justice, I'm sure, for for those who had to live through these times. It's may end up in our history to be one of those things like our land claims where we had land claims and we went through court and we end up not feeling justice at all. And it's very unfortunate. But I'm with you, Joe, that we should not give up. And if any mechanism that we can find, I'm grateful for you, to you, for pulling up this Guam War Reparations Commission. I was not aware of this unfortunately, but yes. It's also unfortunate that, you know, there was a commission. They made their own find, this is a United States Commission. There were members from Guam on it. They made their own findings and so it doesn't look likely that Congress will make any additional findings. And so it's a very tough battle. But I did hear the congressman announce at one point that he was going to go for this money first since this money should be available and it should have been taken out already. And that he would address all the other injustices after that. So I'm willing to support him in that. But whatever we can do, I'm going to keep thinking and finding ways to do that. But I guess, Mr. Chair, what I would, I would like to know regarding this bill. It says the money will be transferred, seven and a half million dollars from the general fund appropriations from 2019 for the purposes, for these purposes. And of course, it envisions that there will be an MOU, a memorandum of agreement between the Department of Administration here on Guam and the US Department of the Treasury. And so I see Mr. Byrne from the Department of Administration. If I could just ask, is this memorandum of agreement something that's being worked on right now between your office and the Department of Treasury? Could you report on this progress?
Senator, thank you for that question. There has been one draft of a possible, I guess I would call it a framework of how to work this memorandum between the Treasury and the Department of Administration. But it's still being worked on. And once this bill progresses, we will move to finalize it.
Have they expressed in theory or, you know, just in sentiment that they are willing to do such an arrangement?
Yes, there have been some correspondence with the Treasury and the responsible people, I think, in the White House in order that they could move this along.
All right, because my biggest concern is that, you know, when this was announced, many of the namco are, they're expecting this immediately. And so I feel very bad when they ask me almost every day, are we getting that yet? They're looking at this as if we're the ones that are delaying it. And so I want you to be as clear as possible with them. Yeah, how long do you expect this to take? I mean, do you have any idea?
No, Senator, I don't. But it's clearly in everybody's advantage to get this arrangement and this framework and this memorandum that you're referring to completed as soon as this legislation is passed by this body.
This legislation doesn't authorize the memorandum though. All it does is authorize a transfer, isn't that right?
That's correct, but it would be hard to have a memorandum without the fund authorization. I don't think the Treasury would be willing to sign a memorandum unless they were certain that there were funds available.
Have they told that, have they said that?
No, but that's my impression.
All right. Can you confirm that the seven and a half million dollars is the amount that they took out of Section 30 and have put aside over in, at the US Treasury?
Actually, I can't quite confirm it. It certainly looks that way, but the way they've expressed it is slightly unclear. But for the purposes of this legislation and this payment, it really doesn't matter too much. That's something that needs to be sorted out when we reconcile the Section 30 funding.
Because it was reported to us last year that the Treasury had already taken that money out, that the money is there and it's available. And it's just a matter of cutting the checks as soon as that technical amendment gets passed in the Senate.
Well, yes, but the situation last year was that the US Treasury itself was going to cut these checks once their legislation had been resolved.
That's right, so they didn't cut the checks, but I'm just trying to confirm if they still have the money.
There is money there. I can't be terribly certain about the exact amount because it seems to vary depending on how you look at the Section 30 funding. But there is some money there, yes.
All right, thank you. And so if we want to expedite this and then this law is passed, it authorizes a transfer from the 2019 appropriations. So it's already August. Where is this going to be transferred from, the seven and a half million dollars?
The transfer is going to come from expected lapses. And now we're in August, we're two months away from the end of the financial year. We should begin to identify those lapses.
Which agencies?
That's something that BBMR is looking at now. I don't have those details.
How soon will BBMR be able to determine which agencies have lapses that you will be able to transfer? Because I don't want to mislead these manco who believe this is going to be something immediate and then we are, you know, we're told again, we have to wait till the end of the fiscal year to determine what the lapses are. Because that's some testimony that we've heard in other bills.
The end of the fiscal year is only 60 days away.
Yes.
And I'm not sure how fast the legislature is going to move with this particular bill. But the governor has been very clear that this money will be available when this bill becomes law. And she has tasked BBMR with identifying the lapses and Department of Administration of making the payments.
All right, so BBMR is not here today. Are we going to be able to determine the lapses immediately? Or is that going to be at the end of 60 days?
And I, she has determined that these lapses would be determined, I guess, coterminous with the passage of this legislation.
All right, and you have no idea what the lapses are in the agencies?
No, I mean, I have some idea, but it's matter for BBMR, not DOA.
All right. These details, I think, are very important. I think since the beginning, when this idea was touted. If we don't know the number up to now, this has been at least a month, I think, or definitely several weeks since this idea was announced. And I want to know, yeah, what is taking so long to determine where that money is going to come from? And I think the legislature, of course, the governor has transfer authority with regular budget items. This is a new budget. I just want to know exactly where that money is going to be transferred out of. And I think that's a fair question to ask of the administration at this point. And I stand behind the quickest way to get this money out as possible. But, and that's why I guess I'm a little bit concerned that we don't know yet where we're going to get this money from and how solid that really is. But I guess I'm going to ask you, Mr. Byrne, if you could just submit to us a report of the Section 30 and if there was any correspondence with you, whether the war claims money had been taken out and in what amount? Because our records show that that's been taken out for years now and deducted from the Section 30 that we've received.
Okay, I will look at that certainly for you. But I think the big message here is that, you know, the governor has championed this. This bill was drawn up between the legislature and the administration. So I don't think you need to be too concerned that it's going to stall because that's certainly...
We're very concerned, Mr. Byrne, because it's been a long time since it was first announced before the bill was actually introduced and the bill still is very vague. It just says there will be a memorandum of agreement that is made. We don't know what, how soon that's going to happen. And it says they will transfer the sum of seven and a half million dollars. And it sounds like no one's here to testify that that's very concrete and that can actually happen or where that's going to come from. Or whether we're going to have to wait 60 days, like, like, I'm thinking it was you who said we can't determine the lapses until the end of the 60 days, right? Or someone from the administration was testifying in that manner to us on prior bills. So I just, that's my concern because they want this tomorrow. And if this bill is going to give it to them tomorrow, great. But if it's not, and it's just another mechanism to disappoint, I mean, I don't want to be part of that. So please, that's just the information that I think is fair for the legislature to have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You may, we will give you whatever information obviously you request. But the governor has made it very clear that it is her intention to pay these amounts out. I mean, that's the whole intention of this bill. That's, you know, because of what happened in Washington and whatever was the cause of the holdup of the legislation there. It's, the whole purpose of this legislation is to make sure that it doesn't happen here.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Thank you. Senator Castro, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Si duus maasi puti testi gun midzu. Senor Magalahin Garido gi nenu nasyon samuru para hago lokui dan itzalumu. Senor Ben meno. Si duus maasi para hago lokui. Gi hilu gi lehes leturun guahan sa hago nu manau iu estino opportunidad. Na bay cosponsor estina priniponi. I just want to echo my sentiments and just inform those who've come to provide some testimony as to why I agreed to cosponsor the bill. I see it as a very clear administrative remedy to provide these adjudicated claims for war survivors. This is not to take anything away, in my opinion, from things that are going on concurrently in Congress. As a matter of fact, I surely hope and pray that Guam's delegate to the House is successful in the passage of Bill 1365, HR 1365, with the support of both the national and local Republicans. I know that the governor has been forthright, has been open and transparent in communicating clearly her expectations with myself. Special thanks also goes out to the Chief of Staff, former Assistant Secretary Tony Babalta, in working with the United States Department of Treasury to articulate a process by which these monies will be made available and reimbursed to the people of Guam. And so I think that's an important component to be stated here, Mr. Chairman, for the record and for the public's knowledge. Thank you again, Madam Chair, Speaker of the House, for the opportunity.
Madam Speaker, do you have anything to say before I make the final closing, ma'am?
Si duus masi, Mr. Chair, and thank you again for this opportunity. And like I said in the beginning of this public hearing and taking the time to thank our World War II survivors that are still here with us and just thanking the presenters who came to this panel to share. And also the administration who's here and then Mr. Byrne. I see the governor's office is here listening. But more importantly, Mr. Byrne, because in our efforts of working together and knowing that the federal government has laid again to Guam that there was a glitch in the system and payment wasn't made, but we've set aside our own funds through the Section 30 or whatever mechanism. There's still a problem of getting those awards to those who've truly suffered. And the only thing I can say, Mr. Chair, is if I stop trying, then I will have failed my sinus. But until this is over and until we can ascertain and get these awards to those that are living today and continue to fight for those survivors who have gone before the due date and to work with their heirs, we are going to continue. And that is why I continue to say on a daily basis that we need everybody's concerted effort as one team Guam. So in the efforts of working almost daily with the administration, with the legislature, with my colleagues, with the federal government, I have to keep trying. And this was one thinking outside the And this was one thinking outside the box. When they asked me, "Why are you doing this? How come this couldn't be done?" I said, "Because there probably was never an opportunity for us to even look at that." But because we finally have resources that is coming from them, paid, and even at the charge of having a 5% setback for administrative costs back to the federal government, I'm going to bite my tongue and hold it tight, because I want to make sure that these survivors get what is duly owed to them. And I will not stop trying. I will continue to work with my colleagues. This Bill 181-35 comes much closer. We cannot stop fighting and working with the federal government to get for all the fifteen thousand plus that have recorded and have filed a claim, and those that have died, their heirs who filed on behalf of those who've died during World War II. But I have to make sure that in the efforts of those who are still living, we have to try and work for them. So in the efforts, Mr. Chair, I'm hoping that we can, I know it's budget season, and I know that it's going to be a very difficult month, but I think it's important that we look at this and see what we can do to literally try to make sure that when our sinus come to us every day as public servants and ask us, "Nayan agao, nayan po recibi estina war claims, besan onisi Uncle Ben and then si Auntie Suzie and si Uncle Joe and si Uncle Ben Meno, Uncle Ben Garido", it's going to be in this time. Not tomorrow, but maybe in this very, 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 very near future. And with the efforts of working with the administration, working with Adalut, working with everybody here, that we're going to have, we're going to do this together, and we're going to do this for them. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a few comments. You know, after listening to Ben Garido, you know, I worked with him in the police department. You know, I honestly believe the war reparation is exactly what Joe said earlier. When they claimed it, they should have just paid it. They didn't do that. The ironic thing is that now we're paying with our own money. I don't understand. U.S., it's our own money. You're not paying anything. And you know what? I support the intent of the bill, transfer authority. I know my colleagues ask, "Where's the money coming from?" I'll confirm it. Section 30 money is supposed to pay for it. That's supposed to have been deducted in the year, early on the year, and there's supposed to be another deduction coming at the end of the year to make sure we have the funds to pay it. I look forward to seeing it paid. Many of you here today that are speaking on behalf of this, I hear this from my parents today. And my father asked me, "Ko guasueti lekna puxencha, dad, zabi shiga, tsomone." I'll keep pushing it. My mom says the same thing. They're both over eighty. They're both listed on the wall, and exactly what everybody's mentioned. And the speaker mentioned there's fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-one listed. Well, just listed is the key. And then one thousand one hundred and twenty died. But for both, back then, when it was presented in Congress, it should have been settled. Why do we have to go to our own money to pay ourselves? I don't understand that. It's good, eh? Finakuntus ben, fa ga ga. But with all interest in trying to, like Joe brought up, let's move this forward. And then we can, I guess we can figure out how to work backwards to cover everybody else. But we need to move forward and get this paid. And I honestly believe, we'll leave it to the administration to figure this out. If the body agrees, approves the transfer authority, it'll be on you, not you, Mr. Byrne, but I know the governor would have to settle this. You work for the governor, you folks figured it out, and let's get this moving. And then we go back and remove some of the fa ga ga. There's nothing we can do right now, but we got to move forward and clean it up going backwards. Because that's the only way we can do it. Otherwise, if we don't clean it up, the dirt, the stain will stay. And most of you, my parents will be gone, everybody will. And I don't want to, I don't want to wait until then. I don't want to see anymore. It's too many of you, I know. And with that, and there's no other testimony. And we did, and we did receive the testimony from Mr. Arce, Arceo. Jesus, Jesus Baza Riz, or Susa, San Sushi. Jesus Baza Riz. We have their testimony, and it's eight pages. And we'll have this on record, and it'll be published. That being said, the committee will conclude the public hearing on Bill 181-35, COAR. The committee will continue to receive testimony on the bill. Police address your in testimony, the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and submit it via email to senatorjoestenagustin@gmail.com. Sisus maasi for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. This public hearing for Bill 181-35 is now adjourned. It is now three seventeen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We will now proceed to hear testimony on Bill 5-35 LS, introduced by Senator Telo T. Tidaway, an act to add a new Article Nine to Chapter Seventy-seven of Division Two, Title Twelve, Guam Code, Annotated Relative to Developing a New Public Hospital Facility Through the Establishment of the Estabita, our Hospital, Our Life Planning Commission. And we'll, we'll, let's take a, we'll make it five-minute recess so whoever would like to leave can leave. Okay? Five minutes. Okay? Thank you. All right, I think the five minutes is up. I would have, let's see, we have five individuals that have signed up. Joe Garido? No, I don't think, is there Joe Garido here? No, I think this isn't, we have Mrs. Posadas, Posadas. Lillian, you're here, and we have, Hi, this is Ethanig, Rod. Is Rod, are you Rod? No. Rod, come on up, sir. Please come up. And we have Mr. Chris Felix. And Menelani Gida. Is there, is Ms. Minjolier or substitute there for? Oh, oh, Tina. Oh, well, you're the one who's going to set up anything that's going to happen anyway, so great. So to begin this hearing, I'd ask, this bill was introduced by Senator Telo Tidaway, but I know that she asked that Senator Castro do the opening statement. And with that, sir, Senator Castro.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of my colleague Senator Telo T. Tidaway, I'd like to go ahead and open up with a recitation of the title. Bill Number 5-35 is an act to add a new Article Nine to Chapter Seventy-seven, Division Two of Title Twelve, GCA, relative to developing a new public hospital facility through the establishment of the Espetata, Linatlatta, our Hospital, our Life Planning Commission. Mr. Chairman, thank you for including Bill Five in today's public hearing and for the opportunity to provide an overview of the measure. Mr. Chair, Bill Five recognizes the development of a new public hospital facility as a priority for the people of Guam. In its budget request for FY 2020, GMHA officials identified fifty-seven million dollars worth of capital expense requirements, such as a six-million-dollar power upgrade project, which includes an electrical panel, a five-million-dollar structural roof repair and waterproofing project, and a new EHR system priced right under twenty-two million. EHR, Mr. Chairman, is short for electronic health records. The development of a new public hospital remains a critical initiative, particularly as the administration of former Governor Eddie Baza Cavo worked diligently in creating a modernization plan for the hospital, including the addition of specialists, as well as facilities necessary to treat patients suffering from chronic medical conditions. Mr. Chairman, the proposals contained in the modernization plan were to be paid using one hundred and twenty-five million dollars in bond proceeds from the prior administration, at least something we wanted to pursue and pay for with the BPT adjustment. Much credit is also due to former Senator and Health Committee Chairman, our former colleague Senator Dennis Rodriguez Jr., for his work, his staff's contribution, and the community volunteers who have put a lot of time and effort into building, at least making a good case for building a new hospital. Included as a specific action in a report issued in 2016 by Senator Rodriguez's GMHA Task Force is the introduction of legislation directing GIDA to develop and publish a request for information relative to how an interested contractor, hospital management team, or operator would transition GovGuam operations of GMHA to a public-private partnership while continuing to provide quality hospital services which are accessible to the people of Guam. So, Mr. Chairman, whether it's a public-private partnership recommended by GMHA Task Force, which, by the way, is a similar approach we have in place for a number of GDOE schools, or through a bond borrowing approach allowing GMHA to build a new facility and transition accordingly, we take action, we're choosing to take action through this initiative sooner rather than later. We'd like to continue to invest limited taxpayer funds in Band-Aid fixes to our current facility. On this note, Mr. Chairman, Senator Tidaway is pleased to share that Governor Leonguero has asked the Army Corps of Engineers to assess the GMHA's facilities as she considers the next step forward. In closing, Senator Tidaway would like to recognize and thank the hard-working women and men of GMHA who continue to do their best to provide our family safe and quality medical care with the limited resources there provided. She also wishes to thank GIDA officials for meeting with her back in January and for their commitment to including a feasibility study required in Bill Five as an area that may be funded and supported in the next SEDs, or Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Mr. Chairman, Senator Tidaway looks forward to working with your committee, our governor and her team, and others from our community as amendments are offered to strengthen the bill going forward. With much respect and amendments, Mr. Chair, she'd like to suggest for the record that the commission proposed in Bill Five be amended to a task force so that she may proceed on this critical issue expeditiously. Sisus maasi.
Thank you, Senator Castro. We will begin with, Lillian, ma'am, and then after you, we'll just, we'll go to GIDA, the money person. And then we'll go backwards, and then we'll start with Mr. Felix and work our way this way. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, U.S. Senators and Buenos. Thank you for this opportunity to listen to our testimony, as provided in both written and verbal format. It's not a very long testimony, but it's to the point. Inasmuch as we agree with and support the fundamental intent and purpose of this legislative bill to establish a planning commission that will guide the development of a new public hospital, we, as the Guam Memorial Hospital's Executive Management Council, this is the EMC, do not think this planning commission is appropriate, necessary, or practical at this time, given the recent approval from the Department of Interior for the Army Corps of Engineers to conduct a full-scale and thorough assessment of the hospital's structural integrity and stability. Additionally, we all know that there are many boards and commissions that have been legislatively established. However, many of them become inactive, ineffective, and non-operational, primarily due to the lack of the quorum, or that some of these boards and commissions have become redundant and unnecessary. Example we heard today was that War Reparation Commission that people did not know about. So therefore, that commission was probably never really active. I don't know. But at any rate, our recommendation is to hold off on this legislation until such time that we have a clear determination and direction from the assessment findings of the Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That was...
To the point.
To the point, and sweet. Ms. Garcia.
Hafaday, Senators Sinagustine and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, and Housing. My name is Christina Garcia, the Public Finance Officer of GIDA, and I'm here to present this testimony on behalf of our CEO and Administrator, Mal Mendiola. I apologize, she is still at another meeting and isn't able to be here. Thank you again for inviting GIDA to provide testimony with respect to Bill 5-35. Although GIDA supports the intent of the bill, we also respectfully request that action be delayed for now. We at GIDA understand the importance of supporting our only public hospital, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, and the importance and urgency of improving safety conditions and the quality of care to the people of Guam. This is emphasized with GIDA's participation in a number of efforts. In April 2012, a Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Expansion Feasibility Study was conducted by Previto Tan Jones Architects Inc. and submitted to the government for consideration. In 2015, GIDA was a member of the Guam Memorial Task Force, chaired by the Chairman of the Committee on Health. chaired by the Chairman of the Committee on Health of the 33rd Guam Legislature, comprised of public and private community members tasked with finding options for the physical and financial sustainability of GMH. A final report was issued in January 2016, but unfortunately, no further action was taken. In 2016, Public Law 33-143 directed Gida to issue a request for information to determine the public interest to the management and operation of, of GMHA. Gida had spent close to $16,000 to advertise the RFI both locally and internationally, health care magazine, to ensure we reached the widest audience possible. A report was submitted to the legislature by Gida reporting that three firms expressed some interest, but, but no further action was taken. From 2015 to 2017, Gida was part of the Governor's Task Force established to develop a plan to sustain the GMH. A report was sent to the Guam Legislature in August 2017 entitled "GMH Business Sustainability Plan" was supporting legislation to authorize a financing of $125 million to upgrade the Guam Memorial Hospital. Although a number of bills were introduced, final borrowing authorization was not passed by the previous legislature. We believe that the one common factor for lack of progress for these initiatives and task forces had been the ability for the government to fund the projects proposed due to limited financial resources. With healthcare improvement being a priority of this administration, Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorl have recently secured the grant from the Department of Interior to fund the assessment of the GMH buildings, again to be done by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. This assessment will help lawmakers in deciding if the existing GMH building is structurally sound or if we should pursue the construction of a replacement facility. Concurrently, in response to a meeting with the sponsor of this bill, Senator Telo Titegui, Gida was sure to include a funding request of $150,000 for a new public hospital feasibility study in the June 2019 submission of the Guam Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy 2020 to 2025, also known as the Guam SEDs. The report, recently accepted by the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, or the U.S. EDA, will allow us now to seek grants to fund a consultant that will work with the administration and Imina Trenta cinco Nelly Hasla Turanguahen in identifying the means necessary for either the renovation of the existing building or for the acquisition, construction, and provision of a new hospital facility, again depending on the account, outcome of the assessment. At this point, we would request that the legislature allow some time to move forward on the current path, as now we can say there is dedicated funding towards the objectives of improving our only public hospital without financially impacting the limited financial resources of the government of Guam. A real financial commitment is needed to update existing studies and to take those studies from the shelf to actual implementation. Once again, thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 5-35. Um, we are prepared to answer any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Felix, sir.
Thank you, Speaker, Senators. Um, I, I sat on the task, Senator Rodriguez's Task Force, for a number of months. We worked very hard and tried to come up with some solutions. I, I'm very glad that the Army Corps is gonna work on the structural. I think it's a good start. I think it's a great beginning. But I speak in favor of this bill. I, I, why should we wait until the report is done before we decide what, you know, where to form a task force or what to do? The report's gonna tell you whether it's structurally sound or not. The task force can be moving in many directions at the same time and can be running in parallel with that report. There's electrical, there's plumbing, the existing structure. We, uh, at the same time, the task force, like we did, could be looking for alternative sites, um, rough costs, working with, uh, private partnership arrangements, see what, what's available out there. Those can all be done, running in parallel with the report. To wait till the report is done just kind of delays us another six months or a year. And as you heard from the other speakers, this has been going on. And, uh, you know, I, I was here when we bought the Catholic Churches Hospital, which is now the GMH. I was there when that happened, you know, and, you know, I don't wanna get forced into a situation where we have to do something that we shouldn't do. And I think if we, if we could run in parallel while the study's being done, if the study says it's unstructural and we can't go there, at least we've started to move in the other direction. And if the, and if the study says it's structurally sound and we could work with it, we still need to work both alternatives. Just 'cause it's structurally sound may not be that we have to keep it or rehab it. You know, there, you have to look at costs. Uh, thank you very much. I speak in favor of the bill.
Thank you. Sir.
Rod Jacob. And I'm here because I was invited, like, uh, Mr. Felix, 'cause I too sat on the last task force in 2016. Um, I do apologize because I got notice of it yesterday and an invitation had come down, so I didn't have a lot of time to collect the thoughts that I think would be beneficial, um, for this hearing. So I can only offer a couple of, um, suggestions and, um, some experience from our task force. We, we started with the question that I know everybody in Guam grapples with. You know, why is our hospital in the condition it's in? It serves all of us. Everybody goes there, everybody has had something. My two children were born there. It's so important. I look, um, through the lens of wonderful, wonderful teaching, um, through Catholic Social Services when I sat there as a director, and that's one organization that cares for the vulnerable in Guam and, and throughout Micronesia through its technical, um, know-how. And we have a huge problem about people being able to afford health care, and that naturally translates into the ability of affordability for the infrastructure of a hospital. And so, we have big, big problems that all have systemic, uh, consequences to whether we find ourselves into one type of hospital, one type of facility for health care, or whatever better alternative there is. The, the takeaway for me from the task force was is we started with the question, what should we do? Should we have a private partner, private, uh, public partnership? Should we buy a new one? Should we sell this? And this task force stopped, and, and Chris is right. We worked really, really hard and really, uh, for many, many months. And we, and we stopped and said, we really have to take a step backwards to find out what the health care market of Guam is, what our needs are, and how the hospital fits in so it services everything we need the hospital to service. So, I would just encourage, um, those of you that are making the decision about whether to move forward with a commission like this or not, to take note that perhaps this structure, although the intention is to, is to, is to figure out what we do with the hospital as far as I can read the bill, is to really be reflective about what is it that we're trying to accomplish and what gaps we're trying to fill. Obviously, we need a new physical plant. Whether it's there or not is a question to be evaluated by the expertise that we have in the government. But there are things I do know that we don't have. Um, we do not have information. Guam suffers from a deficit of information about what our health care needs are and what amount of money we need to fill those health care needs. That kind of information, I think, would be important as well in developing a comprehensive health care, uh, planning system so that we can make really good choices about what kind of hospital we're gonna have and, and what services it will actually need. I'm sorry that that's the only kind of observations I can give you, but that, I think, is an important, um, background as to where the last task force left off. And I'd encourage you to read the report because the report had, um, ten, uh, ten recommendations. The last three, I'm personally interested in. It was, uh, and, and I'll read it. Introduce legislation, I'm sorry, uh, it wasn't the last three. It was, it was three of the last four. Pursue reform of MIP and the Guam Medicaid Program in an effort to leverage additional federal matching funds that will increase the number of resident access to primary health and wellness care. And I know, Senator Talahe, you, you have been grappling with this, with matching. I think that's really, really important and, and important for Guam now because even though we may have a stopgap with, I'm saying this wrong, the disaster, the National Disaster Relief Bill that assisted us with some, uh, funding on Medicaid, I think we all know that the Affordable Care Act increased Guam's Medicaid contribution from about $15 million to close to $60, which is our real need. And we're about to fall back off that cliff. And if we don't figure out a solution for that, I don't know how we can fund health care or new facilities. So, that was one of the, the final, uh, uh, ten points. The second was identify national health care and related safety net research and educational programs and policies designed to ensure and catalog the health care needs of citizen, that citizens are met to promote healthy communities and evaluate such programs are available and policies implemented on Guam. And then finally, ensure that information related to ensuring good and appropriate health care decisions and policies are available to our community and augment information and research capabilities. And so, if there is a commission, I would hope that the commission includes those tasks because I think that they're really important in the calculus of the new facility. And finally, I just wanna give a shout-out to Senator Rogel, only because it was picked up, uh, in both newspapers the other day. And I wanna quote it again. And this is out of the, the report about the buildup. And it's really important, at least to me, about health care. Lower-income people are likely to slip into poverty under economic distress. The possible combination of higher goods and costs and services with higher housing costs would likely affect low-income people. Stressful economic circumstances may push people on the verge of poverty, into poverty, or even homelessness. That drives people away from good health care because we can't afford it unless programs that support people, everybody on Guam, and those are national, federal safety net programs that we have to figure out a way how to fund so we can fund the good work that you all are doing. And I just wanna say thank you to, you know, everybody at the hospital and everybody in health care in Guam because I know that, um, just like even though we don't do a, a, a lot of related health care work at, at places like Catholic Social Services, but I know, uh, most of our health care folks on Guam do it out of love and mission for people, uh, not out of money. And, uh, and, but we need to solve the money problem because, as we say, if you can't afford the books, you really can't teach kids. If we can't afford the hospital beds and the medicine, how can you treat, um, our people? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And please feel free to write up your whole testimony and submit it so we can, other than what we're gonna transcribe from the hearing today. But I know you probably have a lot more information that you can provide to the committee. Were you gonna testify? No. You're just covering our back, right? All right. Um, Senators, um, we'll start with Senator July. Do you have any questions for the panel?
If you could just clarify which task force, uh, so Gida, did Gida mention that task force that you were referring to? So, there, uh...
Senator, I don't, you know, I don't know if this is what, uh, Gida was referring to, but it's the Guam Memorial Hospital Task Force Report from the Office of Senator Rodriguez, 33rd Legislature. Looks like, looks to be dated January 27, 2016. I'm happy to, uh...
January what?
Twenty-seven, 2016.
I can't hear your, what's the year?
January 27, 2016. I'm happy to email it to you. Yeah, I'm happy to email it as well.
All right, so is that the one, your second, um, bullet point, Tina? Or your, or the fourth?
That was the, uh, second.
Okay, so, so that task force, the report. I wanna also give a shout-out to Senator Rodriguez because when I first got elected, one of the first things he did was call us to his office and give all the new senators a briefing on this task force report. And so, and I wanna thank you for your work on it. It, it, it was very comprehensive.
Yeah, and I should have also given a shout-out to Senator Rodriguez too because he really teed this up and, and I thought the work product was really good. And, and we were really lucky because Governor Leon Guerrero sat on the task force with us too. So, I know that, um, she knows these ideas as well and hopefully is, is working to moving those forward, um, as well.
What was the task forces? Can you remind us what their conclusion was regarding the facility? I mean, I know you said it, it, of course, is intertwined with, uh, funding and, and health care in general and, and...
I, I think, and, and, uh, Mr. Felix can correct me if, if my recollection is wrong, but I think we ended up saying, these issues are so big and important that we, we recommended a structure to study them and then to implement them. But as I, the, the first point I wanted to make was that it ended up being, um, a, a host, uh, more, more, um, concepts and questions that we wanted answered than just the binary question of do we need, say, a new physical hospital? There were more questions about that. And I, and I'm sorry that I can't articulate some, uh, and let me articulate in a really, uh, different way. The point was is, say, for example, the community needs X services, but the hospital is geared to provide Y services. We'd wanna know that so that the hos- hospital can be developed around X services and perhaps the Y services are better suited for clinics and things like that. And, and they, and, and they were really these, um, important questions, but we were all committed to the fact that there was information and knowledge. And, and we were also very confident that we had that expertise and sophistication here on Guam, uh, as well. The folks that work in health care know our problems and they really know our answers. And the people in public services, like, you know, for example, um, Ms. Archangel knows Medicaid.
Yes.
But, you know, up and down. So, we have wonderfully sophisticated, um, good expertise on island and, and we all were really happy to both, you know, look at each other and I acknowledge that, but also wanted to tap into that. But we just knew there were some bigger questions.
All right, Tina, Tina, so on your, thank you, Rodney. On your fourth bullet point, you talk about this, uh, GMHA Business Sustainability Plan that was submitted in August 2017 to the legislature. And it was a product, again, a report from the Governor's Task Force. Is that the same task force?
Uh, no, no. This was, uh, more with the administration and GMH.
Okay. Is this the same as what GMH last year was, uh, trying to get the legislature to adopt its moderniz- modernization plan? And, uh, that was, those, the questions that Mr. Jacob, Attorney Jacob, brings up is, uh, those were, those were the issues, I think, that the legislature could not agree on is that, uh, they were proposing to expand certain services. And, uh, I guess, uh, because the, you know, I don't wanna, I'm gonna paraphrase. I might be wrong, but they, I thought they were saying it was because those were the services that would bring in income to the hospital, but not necessarily, uh, you know, how you had described it, that these are the services that the people of Guam need. Well, they did say that also. So, but, but they were telling us that, and I was not aware at that time that there was information backing that up, I guess. And so, I guess, could, could you just reconcile, is this, uh, uh, this is different than that plan?
This, this report was the one that was supporting the Governor's request for $125 million, uh, financing for capital improvement. And, um, and it did have some revenue enhancement, um, proposals in there.
All right, this is August 2017, but I don't remember a financing plan except for a dedicated funding source that they wanted from the legislature. Is, was there a, like a bond proposal?
There was an...
33 what? 338 what, what? Thirty-third, okay, sorry. I'm not aware of that. I'll check it out, but... So, so Tina, um, you also... But so Tina, you also say in your testimony, and I see the directors here, hi, Ms. Menjol, please join us. It's a, just want to make sure, so you also say that it's going to cost us money again to update these plans. These are not viable anymore or...
What we were saying was that the last real assessment by an architect was done in 2012. And so, and then a number was done more on feasibility and strengthening the building. And so that's why we thought that we'd wait for the Army Corps to finish their assessment.
Do any of these reports that you, well, all right. It is very difficult if, yeah, we're going to wait for that assessment on the one building. What was your conclusion, may I ask, on the expansion of that existing facility? That it was viable and that we should do it? And you were actually proposing in the third, about three, four years ago, that there should be a bond passed to fund that?
That is correct. To fund some improvements, we were also proposing to, what is it, take down WZ?
Right. So that was done. And then... This expansion, but not, not a new hospital?
That's correct.
All right. Did you ever come to a point where you seemed to have that conclusion in your task force?
No, we didn't get, we came up with alternate sites. We looked at some costs of rehab. We looked at some cost of rebuilding on the existing site. But again, we channeled into the private partnership and funding and how we're going to handle it and how it's going to be, and then into the services that we could offer.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Chalali. Senator Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some follow-up questions for the panel. So I can appreciate your commentary, but if I'm clear, it's not that you're against the bill, but that you're recommending there be a delay. Until such time, the Army Corps has concluded its study. I agree with you, Mr. Felix, not knowing a whole lot about Army Corps, but if it's strictly a structural assessment, I think that the litany of reviews are there from local experts and non-local experts about the condemnation of Z-Wing. Perhaps that may include other parts of the hospital. But I do want to ask for the record, Mr. Chairman, somebody might know, because these were issues that surfaced in 2016 and 17, for which I have old numbers for, like the operational shortfall, if you have a running tally on that, and also the vendor payables. And the reason why I bring some of this up, Mr. Chairman, is because these proposals at the time for the $125 million bond was designed to address the CIP, the physical facilities, the physical plant of the hospital, that may affect its billing and how it bills and how it collects. That was my understanding at the time. So if these matters were left unattended, then you wouldn't be in a better position to effectively both your modernization plan and also act on any one of the 35 recommendations that came from the Guam Hospital Management Advisory Team. These were things, for example, that have nothing to do with the building per se, but things like the centric system and saving $800,000 a year, at least. And those are things that come off the top of my head. So am I clear, Ms. Passadas, in terms of saying you're not against the bill, but you're recommending that we delay passage until they conclude their survey or assessments?
Yes. That's our point. That's our position.
There was another comment for delay. I think that came from Gita. So Tina, is that accurate also, that you're not against the bill, but that you recommend? We just hold off for a little bit on it.
That's correct.
Okay. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I have one closing question. Is there then, to play off somebody's comment earlier, in the absence of an H-MAT or in the absence of what was then a GMH task force and a 33rd, is there some kind of comprehensive planning, health care planning committee, commission, if you will, that looks at all of these things, specifically GMH, at this point in time that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any comprehensive health plan or, you know, an agency that looks at, other than what has been done by these task force. And that's all I know.
And thank you. And I think on behalf of my colleague, it's important that I highlight that. I do support the intent of her bill, of which I'm not a co-sponsor, but I intend on supporting it if it ever reaches the floor for action. But what appeals to me most is, it's not necessarily the recommendation for a new facility, but that there are provisions within the bill as written for the rehabilitation of existing structures, right? So that's important for people to know in terms of the replacement plans, not just for the facility itself, but I would assume a report will come out in terms of, you know, the equipment, specialty equipment that's needed to carry out certain functions of the hospital.
If I could just take this opportunity to really emphasize not just the physical structure, but the internal processing in terms of electronic health record. That is really a concern because the current system that we have right now will not be supported by next year. And so we really have no choice but to purchase a new electronic health record system. And that we have to do. And I know that we budgeted $21 million in the 2020 budget request, but perhaps if we could at least start with a $10, $15 million budget to then begin the procurement process, the installation, the training, because that hinges on the information that Mr. Rob, here, Rod, mentioned, Mr. Jacob, you know, it really just is going to make sure we get, capture all that health information of individuals that come into our system, and it can generate reports that will then sustain whatever it is that we need to, you know, at least get some more financial support assistance or even research, get affiliated with some research. So really, we, I'm just, again, reiterating and emphasizing the need for that electronic health record plus the electrical panel.
Senator Chalali, you had an additional question you wanted to ask before we close?
Maybe two, if Mr. Chairman, if you allow me, that's one, thanks. So that system will give us, I mean, that new system, data system, is going to help us with some data. But what you've really recommended is what the Senator Castro also talked about, the comprehensive health care planning system. And that's spelled out in the task forces report. But can I ask Gita then again, so you are proposing that, well, you have already requested funds, $150,000 for the new public hospital feasibility study. But it says that will allow us to seek grants to fund a consultant that will work in identifying the means necessary for either the renovation or the construction of a new facility. So when you say in identifying the means necessary, what do you mean by that? Do you mean funding? Is this consultant to help you with funding or to help you with, yeah, what are the possibilities? Because it sounds like that's been studied before, right?
That's right. The $150,000, so the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies, ARSED's report, which was recently issued and finalized, included Senator Tadequie's request for this feasibility study. We have not yet applied for the funding. As we'd like to have some idea of the direction that this funding should go. So if the funding should be for something to the effect of exploring any of these options in the previous task force, it could go in that direction, not to include, but not limited to hiring a consultant or engaging in the work ourselves or engaging in the work with the help of other partners. I think one of the things to recognize that regardless of the direction of the work, when Gita gets involved, money is spent and resources are spent in the way of salaries, in the way of, you know, we spent $16,000 issuing RFPs. And for us to come back and for nothing to come of it, these become sunk costs for our organization. And we're happy to take on the work because it is desperately needed. Having said that, we wanted to be proactive about being able to fund whatever direction it is that the legislature ends up deciding they'd like to go in. We wanted to be proactive about being able to fund it, knowing that you have funding constraints already in front of you. So we said, well, whatever direction we end up with, we'd like to be able to have some funding to get that going, hence putting it in the SEDs.
So you are asking, when you say the means necessary, you're looking for a plan of funding or a plan of financing?
Well, I guess the $150,000 would essentially act as seed money to then determine the means necessary for you to move forward, for the group to move forward, the task force to move forward with whatever it was their plans ended up being. So if the plans end up being issuing a bond or entering into a public-private partnership, we would hope that the outcome of the $150,000 invested would be that we have an option that's realistic, viable, and that we can, we can go down without hesitation.
Yes. Okay. Yep. But that's following a report in 2017 saying that there should have been a bond. I guess Gita came up with or finalized that it should be a bond at that point? Is that right? The $125 million?
Again, it was the governor, we were working with the governor's administration at the time, and the immediate need was to fund $125 million in a bond financing. And the governor's proposal was to increase the BPT by .75, just to dedicate it specifically to...
Okay. So that's my question. Is this consultant supposed to come up with a different means? That's the theory? That's what we're trying to get? Different means to fund, not necessarily an assessment of what to do next?
That's correct. The theory is that a consultant or internally as a team, that as a team, we would come up with the means to fund your new project in as realistic manner as possible, given the current market conditions.
All right.
I mean, I guess my thoughts are just, it was 120, we said it was a bond two years ago because perhaps there was some, there was an appetite to issue bonds two years ago that there isn't today. And so today, the appetite might be, let's get into, let's explore a public-private partnership. In order to go through that, there's time and energy and resources that need to be expended to go down that road. And if we were building a brand-new hospital, if we're even going to involve the US, if we decide that we want to go down the road of the USDA, or a combination of the USDA and grant funding, all of that requires time and resources to be able to handle the paperwork and the back and forth, the requirements associated with doing that. So that's what we meant by that.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a technical follow-up.
Yes, please do. And then go close.
So just to be clear, the SEDs is funded by OEA, which is not local money. That would be SEDs that's submitted. Is it OEA, Office of Economic Adjustment?
No. The SEDs is primarily Economic Development Authority and, or EDA, USEDA. Yes, that's correct.
So that would be federal money?
It is federal money, yes. And by being in the SED, so the hospital project being in the SEDs, we can now go after the SEDs money to fund the planning stages.
Thank you. So I just want to thank the administration on behalf of my colleague for including the request to have this opportunity for a federally funded study to affirm or move on any one of the 45 recommendations, if you take H-MAT, and then to include Army Corps findings. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Senator Castro and Senator Chalali for your questions. I'd ask that the panel please submit additional testimony. Being retired Army, I like commissions. I like boards because we plan around the box. We don't just focus on one thing and then we wait for somebody to follow up. Come up with the alternative course of actions. And if one plan don't work, have them all listed and then move from there. I understand where you come from, from GMH, but I have no problem with having a task force moving. I just want to see, if you're going to do a task force, it's got to be put into action, not just have a task force and just throw it back on the shelf. Why even do the task force? I mean, and that's what you gentlemen have done. Did something, they came up bill, didn't move anywhere. It's got to be meaningful. And being that the governor was part of the task force back then, hopefully we'll see as we go along where we need to go and how the colleagues feel when this bill is considered to be submitted. Okay?
Senator, the only thing I would just respond to about that is, yeah, I mean, it is a little, you know, it's sad, it's on the shelf, but there was a huge amount of knowledge that was developed in that task force. And so I think we do really benefit from those particularized efforts. And I was happy to hear that there was another study in 2017. I just didn't, I haven't had the opportunity to read it, but I think it's all really, really good for the reason that we need information, we need to get to some decision points. But I do think we need to get to it now sooner rather than later, which is why I brought up the quote from Senator Rigel, because all this is coming and we have to have a plan to deal with it.
Yes, yes. Thank you. There being, there's no one else to testify. Bill number 5-35 is concluded at this time. And I'd ask that the committee, to the panel, the committee will continue to receive testimony for the, on this bill. Please address your written testimony to Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing. Submit it via email to senatorjoasenovacian@gmail.com. Jesus mercy for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. The public hearing for Bill number 5-35 is now adjourned. It is now 4:07. Thank you. Have a nice evening. Thank you.